Welcome you here to the, this council meeting. We're just a couple of minutes away from starting the meeting, calling the meeting to order. But before we do, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Mike Overton will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for the opportunity to live in the greatest country in the world. We ask that you provide your grace and protection of all those in war-torn areas and give them comfort. We ask that you help us in our deliberations tonight to make decisions that are best for all, and we ask you to remember the family of a former council member, Kathy J. Cox, and the loss of her husband and their father. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mike. All right. I'd like to again welcome you to this Tuesday, March 29th, 2022, regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. We do have large print agendas. Wyman's holding them up there if that would be helpful for anyone. And with all that said, I'm calling the meeting to order, and I'll ask Denise Pierce to call the roll. Denise?
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Kevin Flores.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fujirus.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Item five, comments from our citizens. If there's, if we have residents that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, this is our public comment time that the council sets aside at each meeting, we ask that you go to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief. And again, understand that the council won't take action on anything you bring forward tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda?
There we go. Hold up a little closer so you can hear me. Distinguished mayor and council, thank you for allowing me to come here tonight. I wanted to come introduce myself. I'm Paul Coven, Jr. I'm running for Senate District 31, which is a newly created district that encompasses Friendship Road all the way across Springdale, goes up into Elm Springs, up into Benton County just a little bit, and goes west to Tonty Town, down to Johnson, and part of Fayetteville. So if anybody's looking for a weight loss program, run for Senate.
Oh.
Because I think I've worn out three pair of shoes already, and you're probably seeing lots of signs go up in yards that say Paul on them. So if anybody asks you who Paul is, I'm Paul.
Okay.
I was former mayor of Tonty Town for the last seven years and had great respect for a lot of the small towns and big towns, for all the woes that they feel when you look at state government. Because, you know, we have so much legislation that's been passed that really hinders a lot of what cities do sometimes. So, you know, I'm very much pro-city, I'm very much pro-business, I'm a retired fireman here in Springdale, very proud to be so. Actually Doug Sprouse was my boss for several years, and I'm very, very proud that I have a young son as one of the newest firefighter paramedics for Springdale. I've been serving for about four years. I'm a real estate broker, auctioneer, licensed auctioneer in the state. Also, I'm very excited to tell you that hopefully in about six weeks, I'm going to graduate from John Brown University with a bachelor's degree in organizational leadership. So if anybody has ever taken any classes online, it usually starts about midnight to two o'clock in the morning, so I have homework to do tonight when I get home. And, you know, that's part of one of my platforms that we're looking into, is we see all kinds of signs growing across northwest Arkansas, and Springdale especially, of help pointed everywhere. And one of our initiatives is to try to put young kids in high school with some form of education that when they get out of high school, that they can go to work immediately. So many kids today don't know the right end of a hammer to hold. So one of our initiatives is to hopefully get not necessarily less funding for four-year colleges, but more funding for technical and trade schools, so that we can put people to work and actually do something with their lives. You know, also, another big agenda item for me, and I'm sure Mr. Sprouse would readily agree, is infrastructure. I mean, right now, this part of the region contributes 80% of the money going to the state, and we only receive 10% back. And with that 10%, we don't see a whole lot going on, do we? I was reminded of that tonight when I come from Tonty Town where I live, that it took me 45 minutes just to get to the 49 Bridge from Tonty Town because of traffic backed up. Then once I got into Springdale, stoplight after stoplight after stoplight, I know Mr. Sprouse and I have been promised the 612 extension for the last seven years, and I don't see very many flags out there or surveys going on. So I know Philip Taldo, our commissioner, needs all the help he can get, he's doing everything that he can do to try to promote infrastructure in northwest Arkansas. My intention is to go down and knock on some doors and ask why. Another big initiative that we have going on, that I know everyone's going to feel this pain, is whenever it rains, Mr. Sprouse gets phone calls. Why do we have flood areas in Springdale, especially when we go under that railroad tracks on 71 that always is closed down when we have big waters come through? Right now, regional planning that we have been working with, Jeff Hawkins and Tim Conklin, have in their hands a regional detention for water. You know, you look at the great city of Tulsa, and several years ago, they started canal systems that helped infrastructure in their towns, to help developers not lose 10% of their property when they went to develop it. Matter of fact, Ms. Christie and I were just speaking a little bit earlier, that we really, really need to get on the horn and try to fix the water issues and infrastructure, and try to get more funding from the state to do so. So council, if you get a chance, somebody asks you who Paul is, with the exception of Mike Lawson, because I know he won't say anything good about me, please tell them who Paul is. Because my intention is not only to work for Springdale, but work for the region and work for Senate District 31.
All right.
Colby, thank you for serving.
Thank you, Paul. And for the record, give us your address, Paul. I don't think we got it.
2771 West Henry to Tonti Boulevard.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council tonight concerning an item that's not already on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item six, approval of minutes. Council, if there are no changes or additions to the minutes, how to entertain a motion to approve them is presented?
No move.
We have a motion. And a second. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. And I'm going to ask Wyman if you'll meet me at the podium. I don't know why we put these in bags, you know what they are. And I'm going to, I'm going to say a few things first, and then, of course, let Wyman have an opportunity to speak. Great to have Lauren family here. This man has, Wyman, in his 21 years, over 21 years, I think, of service to the city of Springdale, has had a hand in every major decision this city has undertaken over the past 21 years. And when you think back at what all has happened in Springdale, and all that's, all that's been accomplished, that's quite a statement. There's very few people that could, that could say that same thing. And Wyman, when I first came here, Wyman had already been on the job for about eight years, eight or nine years. Mayor Van Hoos hired Wyman back in 2000. And two weeks later, we had a significant disaster, an ice storm, and I remember how little I knew at the time, and, and all our staff, all of our department heads were great, everybody was, you know, came together. But I think Wyman was the glue, and, and he helped me more than I can even express, kind of keep things together through that, and, and, and ever since. He's, he's been a trusted and reliable and loyal employee that, you know, and, and I could probably count on one hand the times we've disagreed on something, but he always handled it right. We discussed it behind closed doors, and once the decision was made, however it went, Wyman was, was 100% on board. And, and I appreciate that, Wyman, more than you'll ever know. And he, we're going to miss him, he's going to leave some big shoes to fill. Luckily, Colby's got big feet, like I do, and, but I know that, I know that, that Wyman, even though you're not going to, you're not going to be coming to work in, in City Hall every day, we sure don't want you to be a stranger, and we'll, we'll see you and Lois out on your new bicycle on the trail, and, and always stop by anytime and see us, and we may be calling you for some advice from time to time. I hope that's okay. Anything you want to say? And I'll take this out.
When I moved to Springdale 21 years ago, I never dreamed that I would have the quality of life that we've had here. It's been great for my family and me, and I really appreciate the opportunities that we had, and enjoyed every minute of the work here. Thank you.
Wyman, I'm going to, this isn't going to be all you get, I'm sure, but, but for tonight, I want to present you with that, and just as a small token of our appreciation, we can never repay you for all you've done for us and for our city. But y'all join me, please, in thanking Wyman. So Thursday will be Wyman's last official day, and he's attended his last department head meeting this morning, and, and the department heads certainly had their opportunity to, to thank Wyman, and we'll, we'll have other opportunities also throughout the rest of the week, but, but, and I know, council, you'll want to take those opportunities as you can also, so, so we'll look forward to having Wyman with us a few more days. The next item, George Wheatley, Waste Management. George, I didn't bring you anything, sorry, but, but I think you've got some things to share with us.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
What a tough act to follow. Known Wyman for a long time now, and he's one of my best friends, what I've said in Waste Management, if we could clone Wyman Morgan, we would be, we would be so good. I asked Wyman a few years ago to write a letter of recommendation, we were bidding on a big project somewhere else in the state of Arkansas, and, and he wrote a nice letter, and then at the end of the letter, he said, "P.S. Thank you for putting my initials on each of your trucks." If we can, this is Waste Management, we're going to just give you a, what we call a quarterly report, and we thought it was time that we come in and, and just bring, especially the newer members on the city council, up to speed on what's been going on through the history of our contract. Next slide, please. Our area. Most of you know I'm George Wheatley. 26 years I've been talking trash, and I'm retiring not Friday, but a week from Friday. When I called Wyman initially, I said, he said to me, he said, "You won't believe it, but I'm going to retire," and I said, "When?" And he said, "March 31st," and that was my original date, was March 31st. I said, "I can't believe this." But I will continue with WM as a senior consultant for a year, or two, or three, we'll see how that works out. I would like for Jamie Vernon to raise his hand. There you go. You'll hear from Jamie here in a little bit, but he will be replacing me. He came to work with us, onboarded February the 28th, and Jamie and I have been busy, busy, going everywhere you can go, to, to try to introduce him to as many people as possible. We also have presenting on our behalf tonight, Casey Russell. Y'all have heard from Casey before, works at Springdale Holling and Route Manager, and I do not know what we would do without Casey Russell. That's just the long and short of it. Next slide, and is that, let's, let's click to it. Oh, oh, I do that. Okay. Okay, great. Okay. Casey?
Good evening. This is first quarter this year. I'm just going to run through some stats real quick for you, make sure everyone understands what you're looking at. We thought it was best if we did a complete overview of our trucks inside the city, not just based off your residential contract, but everything included. So residentially, four MSW side-load trucks operate inside the city, Monday through Friday, two recycle automated side-loading units, and one rear-load. Three-month roll, that's 562,000 customers, bags, yard waste, that we have serviced inside the city. Residentially, we've had zero accidents, injuries, zero property damage claims inside the city limits. Commercial, we operate three commercial front-load units. These are for businesses, this is all of your business customers. One commercial front-load recycling unit, 3,345 businesses serviced multiple times per week. Zero accidents, injuries, property damage claims as well. Industrial roll-off, Tysons, Georges, Walmart. Five industrial units operate inside the city, 612 customer service multiple times per week, also zero accidents, injuries, and zero property damage claims.
Casey had this in his slide, but I said, "No, I want to talk about this one." And I'm looking at the past 12 months, not from this date, but the past year, 2021, WM collected 1.6 million pounds of recyclables for processing at our partners' facility in Rogers. One of the things that's on my mind, one of the things that I've talked to my market area vice president about, is hopefully, we can work as a company with the cities, counties, and other entities in northwest Arkansas to develop a, a state-of-the-art recycling processing facility. We call those MRFs, Material Recovery Facility. We would love to be able to do that, and that, again, is, is at least in a plan. I've, I've met multiple times with Dan Holtmeyer. Dan is in charge of recycling for the Northwest Arkansas Council, and I've met with Robin Reed and Wendy Bland, and they are the Solid Waste District Executive Directors, to, to try to say that, that we can do this, but we've all got to get together. And if that comes before you at some point in the future, give it a real open mind, and I would appreciate that. One of the things that we did, and it goes back a long time ago, you'll hear about it in amendments in just a moment, but the city put in a program where it picks up the bulky waste. And, and I mean by that, we're talking about stoves, and mattresses, and, and sofas, and chairs, and things like that. The city's street department does that. And what we worked out with the city, this was, this was Wyman's idea, and Mayor Van Hoos was the mayor at the time, but he said, "You know, we're going to pick it up, and you don't have to anymore, but we need to be able to dispose of it at your landfill for no charge." And this past year, again, this is a 2021 number, we picked up, are we, you picked up 509 loads, delivered those to our landfill, that amounted to almost 1,500 tons of material. And, and if you had had to pay at our gate, it would have been 130,200 and something dollars. And we're real proud of that program. And what it replaced was us going out there every six months and picking up waste, bulky waste, all over the city. What we ran into, though, was just as soon as we picked up that six months, the next six months stack started to happen at many, many homes. And so the city was sort of under a bulky waste attack 12 months out of the year. And now, when people call the Public Works, they get put on the list, and in a day or two, or maybe three at the most, they're picked up by your street department. Marvelous, marvelous improvement to the contract. We're going to go through just a quick history of the contract. The First Amendment, this was shortly after I moved to northwest Arkansas, we, we worked with Wyman and, and Mayor Van Hoos at the time, and we said, "Wow, we've got a, we've got a great contract, but we are writing off," and it was something in the neighborhoods of six figures per month of people not paying their bill. And so it was suggested that we, we do this through the Springdale Water Utilities Billing System. We agreed, they agreed to do that, the First Amendment, put it on the water bill. I have to thank Ernest, he was, Mr. Kate was just so good in helping us with this amendment. But at the time, the city had added 50 cents to the program to do that bulky waste program I just mentioned, and then that was also when we put in the, the free bulky waste. That was in 2007. Three years later, Amendment Two. This was recommended by Waste Management. That first one was recommended by the city and Waste Management. But the city wanted us to, instead of bagged trash, put in carts. So every resident in the city of Springdale was furnished a 96-gallon trash cart by Waste Management. You still had the 18-gallon, looks like a laundry hamper bin for recycling. The, the senior citizen yellow bag program was implemented at that time for people who do not have enough waste to, to fill up a 96-gallon cart, and that's reduced rate for senior citizens. And then all citizens were given the opportunity to buy yard waste bags, the green bags. And then on that amendment, when we, when we completed all of that, we had added five additional years. I think we were at the termination or maturity point of the contract, and that's when the five year, new years were added. Amendment Three, four years later, we replaced the 18-gallon recycle bins, and this was, this was an amendment recommended by the city, and we, we agreed to put in 96-gallon carts for commingled recycling. We agreed also to continue the free disposal of the bulky waste. The, the trails were just about complete in northwest Arkansas, and, and Mr. Morgan suggested that we put our solar-powered compactors around the trailheads, and we, we provided for the city 15 of these. This was about a $50,000 contribution that we made at that time. We also own the property that is now the, the...
Pump track?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Out at the Jones Center, we own that property, it had some ugly buildings on it, and, and part of the agreement, Mayor Sprouse demanded this, that we get that property cleaned up. And so that was part of, raising all of those structures was part of the contract. That, by the way, now has been sold to the Jones Center. They were the low bidder, and we sold it to them at about, about half of the appraised value. And, and at the same time, you know, George Wheatley comes along, and we wanted five more years on the contract, and we were granted that with this amendment. Trying to get this to... Oh, whoop, went too far. Amendment Four, 2015. This was an infamous moment, is the best way I can describe it, but small businesses, some who had small two-yard dumpsters, said that according to the original city ordinance, they could have a cart, the 96-gallon cart, for the same rate as a residential unit. So Wyman called me, we met, we talked about it, and we said, "Yes, we'll be able to do that." And, and we, we traded off there for a two-year extension added to the contract. I will, I'll give you a little piece of trivia with the, with the commercial hand-collect 96-gallon cart. My vice president called me, and he said, "George, how many of these do you think we have in the city of Springdale?" And I said, "I think it's 25 or 30." And we found out that there were right about 100. Then we found out later that we had overbilled those 100 by a tune of $88,000 four years later. And that took four years to overbill them that much. And I'll, I'll say right now, confess, I have nothing to do with billing. But anyway, we did that, and we returned every penny of that $88,000 to those commercial hand-collect customers. And it's, it's a good program. It now matches up with the, our contract matches up with the city ordinance, and that was good for the city. Amendment Five, recommended by the city of Springdale. Wyman came up, I keep saying Wyman's name, but he came up with a fabulous idea. He said, "You know, people who have, have yard waste collection on Thursday or Friday, get home on Saturday and work in their yards and put it out, and it stays in their yard for a week." And he said, "Why can't we just make one day, not a trash day, but only a yard waste day in Springdale?" So every Monday now, that's all we do in Springdale, is pick up yard waste throughout every street there is in your city. And it's been a, it's been a great program, it's been a program now that's been copied in other cities. It's such a good idea. And the term was extended two years when we did that, made that move. And then the Last Amendment, each of you had, had conversations about this and a vote on this amendment, where we came here and we told you that we were having trouble getting the green bags. The stock was hard to get because of supply chain issues, because of the cost of the commodity resin. And we asked, "Could we put stickers?" And then people use their own bags, whatever they find. We, we went around to, to businesses that sell bags, and we lowered the rate of the sticker, where if you bought bags, no matter where you bought them, you were going to pay less money than you were for the original green bag program. When you make a change like this, it's not exactly 100% smooth, but we've had real good luck. It's just a matter now of making sure the stickers get to where they need to be, so they can be sold to the people. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Vernon. Jamie is going to be your, your representative going forward. He's going to talk about he and the city and the future, okay? Thank you.
Hey, George, while Jamie's coming...
Yes.
I didn't notice it on here, but I think one other big point that was important to the city, at least to our water utility, was Waste Management's agreement to continue to take Springdale's sludge at Eco Vista. A lot of cities didn't have that guarantee, and, and that was a, that, that could have been a very expensive, had some, led to some very expensive options for the water department to haul that sludge, sometimes hundreds of miles away, had we not had that guarantee. And so that, that was a big deal for our residents, because while we're not directly over the water department, our residents would have had to pay for that...
Yes.
Through their water bills, or sewer bill.
And I don't remember the exact number of the amendment, but simultaneous with this, we worked out a, we worked out a contract with wastewater to do exactly what you're talking about. At the same time that happened, Mayor, we had told the city of Fayetteville and the city of Rogers that we could no longer take their sludge. But we didn't have their residential contract. And because we had the residential contract here in Springdale, and because we've got a landfill, we worked that out, and that's been a tremendous savings, just in logistical savings expense for the city of Springdale. Thank you for bringing that up.
And we, we talked about that this afternoon, but we couldn't come up with the exact number, but, you know, roughly, don't quote me on it. It was around a 60% discount to the city for the, for the sludge, and so we're really proud that Wes was able to offer that. I'm Jamie Vernon. I don't know how I got... I don't know how I got to follow, you know, George and Wyman. And I'm going to be your new representative for Waste Management. And I'm looking forward to be able to serve the city, you know, and I'm really excited about that. I, I do have a really short Wyman story. I got to have lunch with him for the first time a couple of weeks ago. And I learned really quickly, if you want a long lunch, mention bow hunting, deer, anything of that sort. And, you know, you're good at the Mexican restaurant for extended period of time. The things I'm excited about, I really want to work with the city and continue to, to push communications about weather events, holidays. I know the water and u- water and utilities department is working on, get us some information so we can correlate the phone numbers to the addresses, and then we can push those harder. Right now, we have a quick dial system or mass dial system. We're looking to move to text. And that'll be, you know, have an opt-out option for people that don't want texts. Not everybody wants to get mass text. And then that's in the works and in trials. And so we're doing those things, but communication is going to be really key for me. Because I want to make sure that, you know, you guys don't get phone calls every time there's a weather event. You're going to regardless, you probably get calls on the perfect day. But we just want to limit your time dealing with waste. And then that's our job to do so. You know, Mr. Wheatley mentioned the MRF. You know, that's something I really want to push hard on. I want NWA to be, you know, a hub for recycling. And I want to be able to show the rest of the country that, you know, not only do we have Walmart, Tyson, all the wonderful things we have in Northwest Arkansas, but that we are a sustainable area and that we're going to be that way moving into the future. So those are just some of the things, but those are going to be my main focuses. And, you know, we'll, we'll see how it, how it moves forward. Got a five-year goal of a MRF, but, you know, we'll see, we'll see. So thank you for having us. You know, you can see us after, if you have any questions. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
And speaking of recycling and the future of that, I've had several calls about weekly recycling, maybe moving to weekly recycling instead of every other week. Is that a possibility? My constituents, you know, they're, they're having to either throw their recycling in the regular trash on off weeks, or the recycling is too much to fit into the bins. So do you, do you have any idea?
Well, I'll tell you, anything's possible. You know, that's the really short answer, but that's something we could definitely look at doing. And obviously, we have to defer to our current contract and the current version. But that's something that we'd be happy to negotiate and, and look at doing. Is, is, as long as it's what you guys want, we can work to make that happen.
Okay, excellent. And then the sticker availability. Do we, I, I know I discussed this before, but with the, I know the rec center, I don't know if we have those there yet. Did we get those brought to them? I know, I know it was like upon request. I've just noticed, especially driving around, that there's a lot of bags that just sit out because there's no stickers on them. I think people are having a hard time knowing where to go. I know we always just went to the rec center and got our, our green bags.
So they are at the rec center now? They are selling them, they started selling them there three months ago is when we actually started going back to the rec center to sell them.
Okay.
Originally, no, it was not. It was all call in and then we mailed them out. But they did get back to the rec center, they are there. We just delivered some this Friday before last.
I think maybe since we're heading into that time of year, it wouldn't be a bad idea to put that on our social media that says, these are the places that you can pick those up. So let's say you're wanting to do your yard work, but you didn't contact Waste Management to get those delivered to your home.
Absolutely.
That people will be able to see a list and say, oh, I can go here or here to go pick those up.
WM.com, it's right there listed at the youth center with the address and everything. We made sure that was on the website for customers to look at. So if you go there, you will find that adage, address for the youth center. But we can definitely look at maybe doing another mail out or some social media, send that over and get it taken care of and squared away, no problem.
And, and I think with us, our city social media, maybe put that on there if that's a possibility, Mayor. And then taking, one other thing is taking bags, bags that are not in the dumpster. I didn't know, I had a complaint about that, that they're just, you know, when there's not enough room in the containers, if they have to set trash bags outside of the dumpster, one or two, what, what is the process for that?
With the conversion to automated side load trucks, the drivers do not get out of the cab anymore. Okay, there is no helper on the back of the truck. That's for safety reasons. Taking that person off the back of the truck alleviates the issue that could happen with an injury. So with that, we do offer a second cart, okay? At an additional price of $7.67 per cart.
And that's monthly?
Monthly, that is billed separately, not on their water bill.
Okay. Write that. And then the last one.
Yes. If it's one to two bags, you know, if it's two bags, they need to be smaller.
Right.
They can set them on top of the container.
Okay.
And then, you know, as that automated side loader picks it up, the bin, it'll dump it in first and then it'll open. So when you get outside of one or two extra bags, you probably need to look at that additional container.
Additional dumpster, okay. And then one other question I had, I didn't know how to answer, was if missing a week for ice and snow customers, they have to wait another week for recycling if the ice or snow falls on a recycling week? Is that something that we can maybe the next time, next winter, if we have a recycling week where there's ice or snow, that we can go ahead and pick it up the following two weeks? If we can't get it every week in general?
I think y'all did that last time.
I think they did.
Yeah. We, we had those discussions.
Yes, the, the first time we had the event, we waited for the next service day. And that was an issue and, and the city complained about it and they said, hey, we're getting a lot of complaints. So the second go around, we made sure that the following week, we picked up everyone's recycle, correct?
I really thank you.
Sure. No problem.
And then we were able to get out early enough, the last Friday event, to go ahead and get everybody picked up, which was, which was really nice.
Is the additional recycle bin, is that also available for $7 or is that?
Yes.
$7.67.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
And just to make sure we all know what to expect, Amelia's first point was about getting a quote for recycling every week. Are we going to get that in email or how can you guys provide that to us?
That's, that's going to have to be part of the contract.
Well, just a quote, just to see how much it'd be so we can entertain it or not.
Okay, I don't know if you can do that or not.
Yeah, if, if possible.
Like, like anything we do, we'll run a, what we call a public sector services model, which is a pro forma on, on a new way of doing it instead of every other week, every week. And that will cause us to, to probably have to have extra trucks. And that means extra drivers. And we just plug those into the pro forma and we can, we can give all of you a, an idea on that. We're, we have to be very careful about that because it's sort of like proprietary information, but we will, we'll, we'll work on that for you, sure will.
Yeah, and ju- just so the council knows, that will be in our request for proposals, whether, whether we renew with Waste Management or open it up for others. That, I think we need to get recycling picked up every week, so.
When we first went to the bins on the recycling, we were told to flatten out boxes and set them under the bins. We don't do that anymore, is that right?
No, sir, we would rather, again, it all be inside the cart.
And if they're big boxes, you know, some of the boxes that you get stuff are pretty, pretty large and don't fit in that, then that has to be a bulky waste thing?
Well, no, we will, we will work with you, Councilman Wash. We'll work with you, with the people on that. We, we don't publicize it because we don't want everybody to think, no matter what cardboard they have, they don't need to put it in the cart. We, but people are buying 80 and 100 inch TVs nowadays. And so the, the cartons are rather large.
Right.
And now at my place, I cut mine up, but I'm in the waste business. And I, I somehow cram it all in the cart. But if someone can't do that and they put it by the cart, we're going to get it. Understood, Casey? Okay. I'm on record. My last couple of weeks.
Wednesday's my day and I have a big box out there. We'll find out in the morning.
These are all good questions, thank you.
Anything else?
I, I did have a get contacted on a large box like it that wasn't picked up. So I appreciate what you, what you've said, that you'll, you'll work with the residents. I mean, they're not going to have a big box every week, but they may have one per year.
Well, and, and they're more common too, because people are ordering stuff online all the time.
Absolutely, absolutely. And COVID's helped that, just the internet itself has helped that. And Casey has what we call a huddle every single morning, early, early in the morning. I don't make many of them, but with all of his drivers. And tomorrow morning, Casey, go over that with, with your residential drivers, okay? Okay, thank you.
And George, I, I will say, I, I also had another experience with, I still have green bags. I, I kind of.
Yes.
Hoarded a bunch of green bags, you know, instead of the stickers. And I've, I don't put out a bunch all at once, but I'll have one bag every two or three months, you know? And, and I've done it all winter long and it surprises me that every Monday I put it out before I go to work and it's gone when I get home. So I don't know when they come. But how does that work? Does somebody drive every route in the city to make sure there's no green bags out there on Monday? Is that what happens?
We, we had one, we had one yard race, waste route on Monday, but then we had, how many other residential trash route? So now we have four routes that run every street and, run every street in Springdale every Monday.
They do a good job.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, the last thing, last thing I wanted to say was, we wanted to come today, obviously, to talk about the transition, but then the second thing was, we thought this was very important to have this discussion and to continue having this discussion. You know, we're losing a bunch of institutional knowledge to consulting and then to retirement. And it would be great if you'd allow Casey and I to come up here quarterly, and it may be five, maybe 10 minutes, and just kind of talk about what's going on with you and the city and, you know, and ask questions.
Sure.
And we'll need your card.
What's that? I'm about to make a round.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Thanks, Jamie, thanks. George, thank you for all the years of service. George is a former mayor of Mayflower, right? Magnolia. And, yeah, Magnolia, I knew it was an M word, down by, down there by Claybaker's place. Yeah, yeah. Camden, so anyway, thanks for all your years of help and appreciate it. Wish you the best and we know you're going to be maybe consulting for a while, so I know we'll be seeing you around, so. Yeah. Thanks, guys. All right, moving to item nine, we have procedural motions, what's your pleasure, counsel?
Move for A and B.
Second.
Motion of second for A and B, roll call please.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujarus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Carries eight zero.
Okay, item 10, appointments. We do have three applicants for an open position. Dave Chapman is, is stepping down from the commission after several years of service. I think all three are here. I've, Colby and I have met with, with all three last week. And I'm going to throw it to the council and you all determine how you'd like to proceed.
And first, I would, I would like to publicly apologize to Julie Loper for having an inappropriately timed discussion on civil service appointments at our last council meeting. And we welcome her willingness to serve the city of Springdale, and we're very grateful for that. I would like for the process to go as we, the candidates to go to the podium and let us know a little bit about yourself and why you chose to apply for this position. And then I would like for the council, upon approval, to move to executive session. Are we okay with that?
The, the council, someone can make a motion to go into executive session and we'd have to state the reason, which would be to discuss.
Appointment to the Civil Service.
Civil Service Commission, and we can do that at that time.
Okay.
To, to discuss, after, after each applicant has an opportunity to, and get whatever. And I, and I would suppose if y'all had questions for the applicants, certainly you could ask those in open session.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And we'll start with Laura Epps, if you'll please step to the podium, Laura.
Good evening. My name is Laura Epps. I prepared a statement, otherwise I could, I could ramble a little while. I don't want to take up too much of your time, I can be a little chatty. My name is Laura Epps, I moved to Springdale in 2007. I'm a graduate of Arkansas Tech University with a Bachelor of Journalism, attended grad school there in multimedia journalism. I'm a former reporter with The Courier out of Restoville, and I was on air talent at River Valley Radio Group. And if you had lived in Restoville during that time, you may have heard me on Dial-A-Trade. I don't know if anybody listens to Kerms Dial-A-Trade, yeah. I have some guineas for sale, you can call me, Original Marketplace. When I moved to Springdale, I began a new career in logistics. This new path taught me to be innovative, open-minded, fair, to provide solutions that made a difference. I am adaptable to high-paced, high-stress environments and resilient. I left logistics in 2016, looking for a way to find a more personally fulfilling path. That led me to the Springdale Public Library. I was there a little over, almost three years, and I enjoyed it immensely. I was able to connect with all types of patrons, all ages. And I continued to answer the call for serving my community. And I started volunteering for, as a driver for Meals on Wheels. I was able to do that before my shift started at the library and it kind of worked out perfect. There was a, a Facebook post that they were in desperate need of drivers. And my grandparents had always gotten, well, later in life had gotten Meals on Wheels. And I thought, you know, if I can help somebody, that would, it would be good, they needed it. So that ultimately led to a position at the Springdale Senior Center. And if you haven't been over there, I know some of you have, I would really highly recommend going over there because they have a blast. Every day is a party and they have great food. Lori is awesome. And I really want to encourage anybody and everybody in this room to go check it out, but they leave really early, like at 12:30, so you gotta, you gotta be an early bird to catch those folks. I reluctantly left the center back in November to pursue a different opportunity back in trucking. I currently am a service rider at Doggett Freightliner here in Springdale. That's been a wild ride so far, but I'm, I'm really enjoying it. I applied for this position to continue to serve the community. I have two uncles, an aunt, and cousin who have all served in law enforcement in various parts of the state, Central and East Arkansas. They've all been career law enforcement and I've always been very supportive of them and the things that they've been able to do for their community. I also have a daughter, one. She attends Harbor and has participated in Springdale U Sports until she aged out. I feel like I would make a great addition to the commission. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to introduce myself. And I give the floor back to the mayor and the council if anyone has any questions for me.
What, uh, what brought your attention to this, to this position, Laura?
Well, I've actually kind of had my eye on, on it for a little while. Not in particular just this one specifically, but, but others, library board, AMP. And it just seemed like a good way to serve and be involved in more of a decision-making role as far as different policies, the hiring of officers and firemen. And it's just kind of one of those things that it seemed like the time was right now with the position opening up so soon. And every time I kind of looked at it, it was always something that was, well, there's another opening in two years. So I've kind of been eyeing it and I, I caught a social media post and I said, you know what? This is the day, I'm. This is the day I'm going to throw my name in the hat. And let's see, let's see what happens. And so here I am.
Okay, thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris Hussein, if you would please go to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Chris Hussein. And I'm here to express my interest in being appointed to the Civil Service Commission. A little background about me, I've been living in Springdale just about three years now. I recently bought a home near downtown and committed to staying in Springdale and being involved in Springdale. I am a graduate of the University of Arkansas, as well as the University of Arkansas School of Law. I work here locally in Springdale at Legal Aid of Arkansas. I've been there about four and a half years now. At Legal Aid, I run a group of attorneys. I've probably got nine attorneys that work under me, providing services and representation domestic relations cases to low-income individuals across 31 counties in the northern part of Arkansas and along the eastern side. But I primarily work in this area. I'm interested in this position for a couple of reasons. The first one is that I'm always I kind of looking for a way to give back or be involved. A big philosophy in life for me is always trying to leave something better than I found it. And I found that being involved in things, starting all the way from high school to undergraduate to law school, and even in my law career and being involved with the Young Lawyers Section, the State of Arkansas, and the American Bar Association. I found the best way to do that is by serving in positions like this that are able to give back to the community. As far as my interest in the Public Service Commission itself in general. In the past, I've worked on events with our first responders in law school and then after law school. I had the opportunity to participate in a Wills for Heroes program that gets put on every year throughout the state. I was able to run that program a couple of years and work with some of the departments up here. We even did a separate program just for UAPD because they couldn't make our annual event. And so when I saw this opening, I thought, you know, that was a perfect opportunity to A, get involved, but also B, participate in my community in an area that I'm interested in, in an area that I think is very important to our community, especially when it comes to the hiring and firing and promoting of our officers and firemen, as well as serving on an appeals board in that role. And I think that my legal background kind of comes into play there as far as the appeals process goes, just with the in and out, daily working on rules and interpreting them and trying cases and things like that. But that's really all I've got for you guys. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Hey, Greg Tuck, if you'll please go to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor. Thank you, guys, for the invitation this evening. My name is Greg Tuck. I've lived in Springdale since 1997. But I have a history with Springdale and Northwest Arkansas even before 1997. As a territory sales rep for Hills Brothers Coffee, working out of Tulsa, I started calling on the grocery stores in Northwest Arkansas and in the River Valley in 1976. Please don't do the math on that, okay? Long time ago. You can tell from this. There were not any Walmart Supercenters in the area at that time. There were Harps, Consumers, IGAs, and several Safeway stores in the area. The Safeway in Springdale used to sit in the parking lot of the current Springdale Walmart Supercenter. When in town, I would stay overnight at the Holiday Inn across the street from the Safeway at what is now the Executive Inn and Suites. Nestle transferred me to Northwest Arkansas in 1997 from Memphis, where we had lived for seven years. My new assignment in Northwest Arkansas was to call on Sam's Club. Prior to that, we lived in Kansas City for two years. And before that, I'd lived in Tulsa from the time I was 14 years old. I was actually the first Nestle employee to request a transfer to Northwest Arkansas specifically because I knew what a great place Northwest Arkansas is. Though I've lived here for only 25 years, I've been very familiar with Springdale for a long time. So much so that when we moved to Northwest Arkansas, we chose to live in Springdale, while most of my Nestle cohorts chose to live in Bentonville. I quit hired from Nestle in 2014 after a 31-year career. I say quit hired, which is far different than retired, because I'm still working. I wasn't quite, quite ready to stay home and loaf, so I went to work with my wife Becky, selling real estate. She was already working, working in the real estate business and needed a good sign boy slash open house guy, and I was available. She hasn't touched a for sale sign or an open house sign since I started working for her. Am I adding value? She thinks I am. And that's all that matters. My two kids both went to school here and both graduated from the University of Arkansas. Both are working in the area. My daughter in a, in a marketing firm in Bentonville. And my son is the head football coach of Amburran High School. So why me for this position? What I will say is this, when I became aware of the commission opening, I got to thinking about what I have done or have not done for this city that we've grown to love. And it's this, I've paid my taxes and I voted. That's it. That's really all I've contributed to the city of Springdale in my 25 years here. This commission opening feels like an opportunity for me to do a little more than that. As is obvious from my employment record, I'm not a job hopper. I'm very reliable. When I commit, I'm in it for the long haul. And my word is very important to me. I do what I say I'll do. So if you'd like, if you think I'm the right fit for this commission, I would gladly and proudly accept and serve the people of Springdale. If I'm not the right person for this commission, I'll just keep on paying my taxes and keep on voting, just like we have these past 25 years, because we have no plans to move. I thank you all for all that you do for all of us, the residents of Springdale. And I appreciate your time not just here this evening to allow me to address you and for this opportunity, but for all of the time you have committed that you commit to be on this committee, this city council. Thank you. Any questions?
When, when you saw the opening, what was going through your thought process about applying for this?
You know, I thought, here's an opportunity. It wasn't just this specific opportunity I was interested in. It was an opportunity. Maybe a little guilt. I have enjoyed living here for 25 years. And like I said, I've paid taxes and voted. And I've done nothing else. And, you know, it seemed like an opportunity, opportunity to do something else other than that. And just take and enjoy what we have here. So really, it was an opportunity. Not just specifically this one, but this was, this was now. And, you know, at this age, I better do it now. Don't need to wait.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes, sir.
What volunteer experiences do you have in, in, in recent years?
The things, you know, at Nestle, we had a variety of volunteer opportunities, Samaritan's House, that kind of, that kind of volunteer, but nothing like what the young lady was up here before has had. So this would be my first, I guess you would say, legitimate volunteer opportunity. So not much.
It, no, it wouldn't have gotcha question.
That's okay. That's, that's a fair question.
Thank you.
Why now?
Okay, thank you so much, Greg.
You're welcome.
I would like to make a motion that we move to executive session to confer with the council for the appointment of Civil Service Commission.
There's a, there's a motion. And a second. All those in favor, please vote. Okay, go ahead.
Absolutely. The statute on the open meeting law makes it clear that an appointment to a commission is considered a public officer under the statute. And I think Frank, if I'm not wrong, has a room set up across the hall. Just the council, the mayor can, since he's actually an ex officio member of the council, may be required to vote if there's a tie. Or, I'm sorry, if there are only four votes to be the fifth vote. That's correct. Not me, no.
All right. Now we have a motion and a second. Y'all are welcome to stay here and relax. I wish we could put something good on the TV. But anyway, we'll be, we'll be in a, in a room back there for, for our discussion. No, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna vote. I just wanted to say that before we voted. All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
All right. We'll see y'all in a little bit. All right. Thank you for your patience. I'm, I'll call the meeting back to order. Was there any, is there any action to take resulting from our executive session?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Greg Tuck to this position. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just to make sure, we don't have to get out of executive, right?
No, I just checked. I just called the meeting back to order. So we're in open session.
Yeah, only requirement is that if there was any action taken executive session, that you take the action in open meeting.
All right. Any further comment or question? Roll call.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your interest in the position. And, and we hope, we hope you'll still be interested as other, as other opportunities come up because we would love to have you serving with us for our residents, okay? And Greg, thank you for your interest as well and look forward to working with you on the Civil Service Commission. Okay. All right. Item 11, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations by Patsy Christie.
Do we have to do the resolution on 10?
Do I have to read it? Was his motion?
I think you read the title before you went into executive session, didn't you?
I don't think so. I probably read making an appointment.
I thought we read it before we entered the executive session, yeah.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, we did. We read.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're good on that. Okay, now, Patsy, I think we're ready.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is a revision to a PUD that was approved several, a couple of years ago. The cottages at the Park Plan Unit Development. This is a 46.5 acre tract located on Downham Road. Phase three was amended in December of 2021 to allow for the same type of development as phase one and two. The second amendment is proposed for phase three to reduce the depth of the lots so that additional right-of-way for the West County Line Road extension can be completed on this piece of property. The property to the south of this is not in the city limits of Springdale. And the design of the road was shifted to the north. And this amendment is to allow that it's the same kind of housing development. It just makes the lots just a little bit shorter than what they were originally plotted. Planning Commission reviewed this amendment. And I can go through all of the details of the PUD if you want me to, but I really didn't bring them with me. I have to do them from memory.
Patsy and I talked about it today. And I thought surely, if, if the only change to the PUD is that, that we didn't have to sit through all of the other stuff.
I mean, it's really at the city's request and to the city's benefit to do this so that we get the street built on the north side. So the title of the ordinance reads an ordinance emitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Plan Unit Development PUD to Plan Unit Development Revised PUD and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Are there any other questions or comments? Anyone? Denise?
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Would merge clause be adopted?
Second.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance's mercy clause carry eight zero.
Mercy clause are added as usual because they're pending actions on some of these properties. The next request is to rezone 15.6 acres located at 1550 Gene George Boulevard. The request is to rezone the property from Agricultural District A1 to MF24. The Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance emitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to high-density multifamily residential district MF24 and declaring an emergency. And it should be noted that this is in the overlay district, so they will be required to meet the overlay district standards as well as the multifamily design standards as this project is developed.
Is this an appropriate buffer for that area?
I believe it is because we've got major commercial along 412. This allows us to create a transition down from that commercial development to other types of uses in the area, both along Gene George Boulevard and what, what is along Sunset Avenue as well.
Were there any negative comments during planning commission?
I don't believe so. I don't, I didn't note any that was, any comments about it. No.
I'll make a more, a motion that ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and ordinance to approve, or motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
Patsy? Can you give example of how the overlay district requirements would apply to MF24?
The screening of the parking lots that are adjacent to the street has a different, there are different options that they have to do with those. Each of the structures have to have stone on them. The signage can only be what's approved in the overlay district itself. There are no variances to the sign ordinance. The treatments of the streets and the intersections, those kind of things are all set by that, that standard, in addition to the multifamily design standards for extra open space, different kinds of units and that kind of stuff, too.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Any one in the room? Denise?
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes, ma'am.
Would merge clause be adopted?
Second.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Both the ordinance's mercy clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a request to rezone 1.62 acres located at 1015 East Apple Blossom. This is an area that came into the city of Springdale with the Bevill Heights consolidation. Their request is to rezone this property from SF1 to Commercial District C2. Remember, we just took what their zoning that they had and transitioned it to comparable zoning districts in Springdale when it was consolidated. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance emitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from low-density single-family residential district SF1 to general commercial district C2 and declaring an emergency.
What is, what's going in this location?
I'm sorry?
What's going in at this location?
Now, remember, when we rezoned to something, anything that is allowed in a C2 zone can go there. No one has to tell us exactly what they want to operate at that location.
And there's residential surroundings. So is there any pushback from residential?
There were some questions about what kind of screening there would be adjacent to it. And with the commercial design standards, because it is adjacent to a residential area to the, to the south, they will have to do screening. because it is adjacent to a residential area to the, to the south, they will have to do screening. There is a church to the east of it, a west, west of it, sorry, to the west of it. They'll have to do appropriate screening with that as well.
And if, yeah, if I remember right, Patsy, there was even a neighbor there to speak in favor of it.
There was.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was.
Patsy, refresh my memory, what's C2?
C2 is general commercial district. Most everything that's allowed in a commercial district except automotive sales is a conditional use only. Any other kind of automotive services is not allowed. Anything that has a drive-through window is not allowed. No entertainment, none of those kind of, of those things. It's trades and services, neighborhood services, general, I mean, neighborhood goods and general shopping goods and those kind of things are allowed. And if you remember, Highway 265 has been widened, so it's a different situation. The 412 bypass, when it's extended, will be out in that area. So I think we're going to see some changes in this area as development occurs over the next few years as well.
I make the most, a motion and the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
Is there anybody in the audience to address this?
I will, I will ask, I always ask y'all first and then I ask them. Anyone in the room? Okay. Denise.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Second.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell. Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Both the mer, ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a revision to a PUD as well. This one's a little bit different than the last one. This was approved in 2021 in June as the Barbary Court Plan Unit Development. It's 15 acres located north of 3018 East Robinson. The PUD as approved was for development of 85 residential lots, a density of 5.6 units per acre. They had two access points on to Robinson Avenue and the distance between the two access points did not meet the fire code standards and they required for all the dwellings to be sprinkled. The development at the time indicated they're, they didn't anticipate any, bringing any additional properties into this PUD and it was approved and they've moved forward. They have covenants with interior, what kind of material can be used on the buildings and we'll go on to that in just a minute, into those details. I don't want to have to do this twice. So this one being amended is contingent upon the next one being approved. Because, and we kind of need to talk about these two together, so if you'll indulge me for a minute, let me go to the next one so you can see what it looks like, too, which is phase two of this Plan Unit Development. What they modified in phase, phase one is in the northeast corner of it and made an access that would go on to this additional piece of property. What this allows it to do is to have a third access point on to Highway 412 that meets the distance requirements to meet the fire codes, so all the structures do not have to be sprinkled. Okay, so that's, we're kind of working on these two together. So I want to go over the, the requirements of the PUD, so everybody is, is, understands what we're doing because it's a bigger project than what we had when we started with. As I said, the original phase one was 15.12 acres. Where they're adding an additional 8.77 acres. And what they're doing now is buil, building it into phases. The first phase, which is already under construction, will have walking trails, a pavilion, barbecue grills, and tot lots located within phase one and will be built during phase one. Additional trails within phase two of the development provide connectivity between phases and throughout the development. So that's what we're looking at, is adding that second phase and putting the two together. The strategy now is to develop an approximately 23.89 acre site as a PUD with single-family homes on 133 residential lots. The developer intends to build and sell homes on lots and, on the lots and/or sell lots. The lots will be similar to conventional subdivision lots with a front-load garage accessing a public street in front of the home and a private backyard behind the house. Typical lot sizes is 40 foot wide by 110 to 140 feet deep. The uses that are allowed in these, this combined PUD will be citywide uses by right, cultural recreational and health facilities use unit four, single-family dwellings as a use unit eight, and a model home or a temporary marketing office. Those are the only uses that will be allowed in this subdivision. So phase one was 87 homes on 15.12 acres at 5.7 homes or units per acre. The additional 46 on that 877 is 5.25, so the entire project will be 133 homes on 23.89 acres or 5.7 units per acre. Phase one had 2.4 acres or 15% of the gross area left as green space. The second phase will add an additional 1.96 acres, which is the minimum of 15%, which gives the entire project up to 4.36 acres, which is 18.3% of the total project. As I said, the lot sizes will be 40 wide by 110 to 140 feet deep. Typical lot will be 4,400 square feet to 5,900 square feet. The front setbacks will be 25 feet. There will be front setbacks of 30 feet applicable to the exterior lots in phase one only. The interior side lots will be five feet. The exterior side lots will be 10 feet along streets with right-of-way for corner lots and the rear will all be 20 feet. The PUD is designed to provide a mix of housing options not widely available in this area and not achievable within the city's standard residential zoning districts due to the shape and size of the proposed lots. The, as I just went over the setbacks and I'm not going to do them again unless y'all have some questions about that. Each home is required to have an attached garage with capacity for at least two vehicles. The covenants provide requirements for any accessory structures to be placed on the lots. As I said, only single-family, no duplexes, no triplexes or multifamily can be in this subdivision. The covenants in this development plan specifies that the exterior building material of all of which will be required to be high-quality upscale material. The first floor up to the second floor plate of each home will be 100% brick, stone or manufactured stone and no siding. The primary building materials will include brickstone, manufactured stone, wood and concrete siding such as Hardy brand. Developer intends to buy, build and sell the homes as opposed to building and then renting homes or selling lots to individuals or home builders. Plans and elevations of similar sample houses were included and I think if we go on through here, you can see some elevations of what they look like. The covenants include various provisions to ensure the pleasing appearance of the neighborhood, to specify the location, materials, maximum height of fences, requiring trash containers. It has to be stored out of the si, out of site and all yards have to be maintained in an orderly manner. The PUD will have access to a wide array of amenities including tot lot, playgrounds, walking trails and pavilions with barbecue grills in, in both phases. The sidewalks will allow pedestrians to access the neighborhood green space and the playgrounds. The off-street sidewalks through green spaces will have baller-type lighting typically spaced at 90 feet. That there will, there will be a six-foot privacy fence along the rear property line of lots 1 through 18 and lot 21 and, and lots 29 through 66 in phase one and along the rear property lines of lots 2 through 19 and lots 28 through 36 in phase two. These are the fences that back up to the, to the public areas or the common areas so those people will have some privacy in their backyards.
Patsy, can you go back to that previous slide just for a moment? Without you losing your place?
Yeah.
I think the question came up at, at Planning Commission. I just want to be clear because this hasn't been changed. But on the elevations, on those top two rows of elevations, the brick is only shown up partway on the first floor and they, they, that question came up at Planning Commission and I just, just in case anybody had that question.
Yeah.
This does not match what you read.
Yeah, because this was changed from the time it was submitted to the new document that you have today.
So they will all, they'll all be, the bottom floor will all be brick?
Will either be 100% brick, stone or manufactured stone with no siding.
Right, okay.
That was, that was changed in this one, right. I'll have to go over the, the amenities again unless somebody has a question. Each home builder will install one tree during house construction. Installation of the tree is a requirement prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy and they list specific species that will be allowed. The primary streets along the front of the houses are proposed to be constructed within 46-foot right-of-way and will be 20 feet wide, measured from back of curb to back of curb in the driveline and 29 feet wide. Parking is located on outside of, on the, on the outside of the street and it is designated on the plans which, where the parking areas are along the street. Streets will be wider in the vicinity of fire hydrants measuring 26 feet wide from face of curb to face of curb for a length of at least 20 feet on each side of the hydrant location. That's to accommodate the fire trucks going to those locations. The entire project will be developed in two phases with three access points. Overnight parking is prohibited in all streets within the development other than designated parking areas. All streets are proposed to be dedicated to the city as public streets within dedicated rights-of-way. There will be monuments, signs, constructive stone or brick with cedar accents. They will be on the southwest corner of lots one and four in phase one. And phase two will include a sign, a single monument sign on the commonies just north of the 412 ri, right-of-way. I think that's all in the development plan itself. There is a set of covenants which the city has made a part to that establishes a property owners association, establishes how that, each lot will have one membership in the association. It sets up how those members are to be elected and at what point the POA takes over after the developer, developer has sold a certain number of lots. There is assessments that are leaned on each of the properties to maintain the common properties. The initial assessment is 150 feet, $150 per lot and the regular assessments on an annual basis is 160. They have the ability to set up specialist assessments and use those for identified common area projects and improvements. They set out the duties and associations and they are establishing a funding of $2,500 legal reserve fund for the benefit of the association when it starts. They indicate the property rights and the common properties and I can read all this to you, but you all can read this and if you have questions, we can go into more detail. No lot may be divided or split. No building or structure intended for a business purposes shall be erected, placed or permitted on any lot. It's residential purposes only. They have established an architectural control committee that will review all plans and approve those before we move forward with any construction, including accessory buildings that are included on the lots have to go through the architectural control committee. They have established that the garages, as I said, have to be detached. No garage shall be enclosed, modified, otherwise used so as to reduce its capacity in parking spaces nor shall a garage be converted to a living space. All garage doors are to be kept closed when not entering or exiting the, the garage. Any dedicated detached structure to be built on a lot should, such as covered entertainment area, guest house, pool house, storage building or other structures shall conform to the basic styling and materials of the residential dwelling and all of those have to go through the architectural review committee. No temporary structures, no trailer, mobile home, tent, construction shack or other outbuildings shall be erected on the lot in the subdivision except for temporary construction while, for contractors while that's going under a reasonable amount of time. The requirements for fences have to be six-foot privacy fence with vertical boards, not horizontal and no chain link fences, wire, hogwire or other similar material shall be permitted. They've established locations for mailboxes. There can be no other signs, vehicles can't be parked in the yard. No inoperative vehicles of any nature shall be permitted to remain on any lot or lot for a period of excess of one day. Accordingly, no vehicle shall be parked on the street for more than two consecutive days and shall not be parked overnight on the street. They can have the vehicles towed at the owner's expense. They are indicating that all of the grass has to be mowed and kept at a height of not more than six inches and have the ability to have that grass mowed and put a lean or assessment on the property. No recreational vehicles, boats, trailers or anything can be on the lot unless it fits within a garage, which is kind of unusual because you gotta, gotta use, use it for your car. So I don't know how you get a car and a boat in there, too, but it's still there. They have established one model home to be used in phase one. There will not be a model home in the second phase at all. And I believe that's all the highlights of the details unless somebody has some questions.
Patsy, you had mentioned mailboxes. Will there be mailboxes per residence or will there be a community box?
The post office does not allow individual mailboxes anymore. They will want a community box and it will be set up, may, maybe two, I don't know. We, we haven't got that far yet. I don't know that they've talked to the post office about what kind of mail service they can have yet. But they dictate and, and you'll see in most of the ones now, they are a postal-approved facility for groups of houses in one location.
I just want to make sure it wasn't individual, but if we're parking on the street.
Yeah, no.
Parked in front of mailboxes, all of them, okay?
Right, yeah.
Patsy, you mentioned the boats and they have to be in the garage. But you're also expecting cars to be parked in the garage. So more than likely, there's going to be boats not parked in the garage.
Well.
What happens in that situation?
All I know is in section 9.08 of the covenants, it says no garage shall be enclosed, modified or otherwise used as to reduce its capacity for parking vehicles. Now, is a boat technically a vehicle and you can park it in there? Is an RV technically a vehicle that can be parked in there? I'm not an attorney, but I'm just reading you the words. But when you go on over to section 9.16, it says recreational vehicles and accessories, no boats, trailers, recreational vehicles and vehicles used for recreational purposes are allowed in the subdivision unless they will fit entirely into a private garage. Now, I guess you could put a, an accessory structure on there if the IAC committee approves that to park one in. I don't know.
Sounds like they got to put their boats in the garage and their car can be parked in the driveway.
Well, if, if the term, if the definition of a vehicle includes those things, then yes, you can put it in the garage. What they're saying is you can't use it just for storage or you can't convert it to a living space. It's supposed to be for parking of vehicles. Okay?
So they're not required to park the boat in the garage?
They can't park it on the subdivision in place else unless it's in an enclosed structure.
Where, where's it say that? Where's it say it has to be in?
In, in the covenants of the, that are attached. No garage shall be enclosed, modified or otherwise used so as to reduce its capacity for parking vehicles nor shall a garage be converted to living spaces. But in, in the other section, it says recreational vehicles and accessories, no boats, trailers, recreational vehicles and vehicles used for recreational purposes are allowed in the subdivision unless they will fit entirely into a private garage.
That didn't say you have to park it in the garage.
I don't think, the, the ordinance also says, A, you can't park, boats fall under trailers because they're always in a trailer and RVs fall under the same ordinance that say, A, you can't park them in the front yard and B, you can't park them on the driveway unless they're more than 10 feet off the street, which I don't know if they would be able to meet this if they parked on one of these driveways. That's probably why it says that.
Yeah.
So you're saying because it says they have to fit in a garage.
That's say you have to keep it in the garage.
Okay.
But they couldn't keep it in the driveway because I don't think they could keep it 10 feet off.
So who enforces this?
Well, this becomes a PUD and the city has made a party to the covenants.
I will tell you, if there was a boat, trailer or an RV parked closer to the, to the street than it's supposed to be, neighborhood services would address that.
Yeah.
Or if it's in the yard.
And that's why we go to all this trouble to make sure it's all written in this.
What about retention ponds? Are there retention ponds?
There are retention ponds, but our city ordinance requires that they become the ownership of the city and those will transfer. I'm at, I'm looking.
And where are those located, towards the?
There's one in the entrance on the second phase and the first phase has one over in the northwest corner.
Okay.
That's where those two are.
Also, is there any change to phase one as far as changes in lots or drawing, any of the drawing changed?
The corner that changed where the street goes across and connects to phase two.
So there was a change in the drawing?
Right, and they changed two or three lots to make them fit so that they could put that street extension before it just curved around and went back out to 412. And now they added that extension and so the lots have been reconfigured in that.
Okay, and, and is there any difference in lot sizes between phase one and phase two?
No, they all meet the typical lot sizes that I told you at the very beginning.
They're all the same-sized lots?
They have a range.
They have a range?
Not all exactly the same size. They're not all exactly the same size, but they range from, uh, they're all 40 feet wide.
Which most of the ones in phase one are 40 feet wide, right?
Yeah, they're all 40 feet wide and either 110 to 140 feet deep. And, and that's where the variation comes in the depth of the lot, not the width. They're all have 40, 40 foot of width along the street. And remember, when you do a PUD, that's where you can set your own lot widths, lot sizes, and setbacks, because that's what, one of the things that's allowed in a PUD itself.
A, a, and so as to squeeze all these lots into phase two, they shortened all the lots, basically?
Phase two didn't exist at, at all. I don't think they shortened.
Well, they shortened them compared to PUD phase one is what I meant. They don't look as long.
I think the ones on the east side are the same depth, aren't they? As the ones in, yeah. I don't think they're any shorter than the ones at the, the ones on the very east side of the, the road going into on phase two are the same length as most of the ones on the very western side. The ones in the interior may be a little bit shorter so that they could get the green space between them and allow the, the trail system that goes through there with bollards so that you have those connections. That's where you see the smaller, the shorter lot sizes.
Well, I'm talking about phase two, though. There, there, there's a group on phase two that appear to be pretty short.
On the, that backs up to the lots in phase one, and there's a green space between those two sets of.
You're right.
Yeah.
And then where the road curves to the east.
Right.
Those lots become short also.
Yep.
So basically, there's no yard on these lots.
Well.
No?
There's a very short front yard and some backyard space.
Patsy, so we got a PUD and a P O A and an architectural committee?
Yes.
In all of this?
Yes. Yes.
I think this is my first time dealing with a combination of the three. We're just, so the city, the city has standing to bring anything regarding the PUD? Any violations of that? And then, you know, the P O A and the other stuff, we don't deal with. That's the neighborhood, correct? Ernest?
Your question encompasses about 12 different things.
Right, and that's, that's why I'm asking.
It's hard to give a yes or no answer, uh, because there's so many different things that are included. Just like a discussion on the, you know, their covenant say you gotta poke and park a garage in the, or a boat in the garage. Well, our ordinance says it has to be 10 feet off the street so they can park it in the driveway anyway. We would enforce that.
Yeah.
But that's one aspect.
Yeah.
But the P O A could enforce it has to be parked inside if, if the P O A chose to do that.
So on, on this drawing we have here, uh, did I hear you say that's a green space between phase one and phase two?
See that, where that line across there where there are some trees? That's the open space that they're adding between those two sets of lots. Now, those are supposed to fit together. There's not that big gap in there.
I got you.
As you see on the, on there, but that's where their open space is behind those lots.
And, and who maintains that?
The P O A does. It's, it's platted as common area that the P O A takes care of. And it has trails with bollards so that they connect to the, uh, other amenities that are included in this, in both phases of the subdivision.
And this may go back to your question, Kevin, about that. We've, we've learned our lesson on these POAs. She mentioned the pre-funding. I can't remember what the amount was.
$2,500, I think it was.
For, because, because in the past, some of the first PUDs we ever did, P O A never got set up. And then the common areas weren't maintained.
Right.
And then we're left in an untenable situation. And you're depending on the folks that live out there to take care of it. Whereas we learned our lesson and we started getting these pre-funded to where it gets them a head start.
Right. And then I told you what their initial assessment was and what the annual assessment is. It goes in off of every lot every year. And then they have the ability to assess special assessments for things that they need to, as, as the subdivision moves on to. Okay?
I move.
Well, I haven't read the titles yet. How about if I read them?
Real quick, Patsy, before you do that, just for my own peace of mind. I thought, have I missed it that you said garage doors could only be open when you're going and coming?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, who's going to force that?
That's a P O A thing.
Okay, good.
I've, I've asked that question.
I'd be in trouble.
Yeah, me too. I've driven off and left mine open while I'm gone, more times than one. But I, I have this app on my phone now that it'll tell me when I'm down the street and I left it open.
Is, is that normal? Because I have never heard you say that before. Is that new?
The last two or three of them, we've had that.
Okay.
Yeah, we have had that.
I missed it before.
Because I asked the question the first time, so you really mean you gotta keep your garage door closed all the time? And yes, I wanted to make sure that's what they meant because that's what it says.
Police probably like that, don't they, Frank? Yep.
Okay, so we have two ordinances here. The first one is, um, an ordinance amending number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat there too by rezoning certain land located behind 3018 East 412 from planning unit development P U D to planning unit development revised P U D and declaring an emergency. And the second one is an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining there too by rezoning certain lands located behind 3178 East Robinson for multifamily, from medium density multifamily residential district MF12 to planning unit development P U D and declaring an emergency.
Move both ordinances be, uh, passed.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance, both ordinances. Uh, any other questions or comments from the council? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Pow.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes, ma'am.
Pow.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Both ordinances pass and the emergency clauses pass by a vote of eight to zero.
The next item is a request to rezone 4.3 acres located at 7660 West Gibbs Road. The request is to rezone the property from agricultural district A1 to low medium density, single-family residential district S F two. The planning commission, uh, reviewed this request and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining there too by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to low medium density, single-family residential district S F two and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance pass. So did we vote on both of those?
Yes.
Okay.
We did.
So by going to S F two, then it is able to be in the PUD as S F two, is that correct?
It is in S F two by itself. Uh, the PUD on this one, well, there's no PUD out there because Harbor Meadows is south of, of, uh.
I'm looking at the wrong one, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'm just looking at the last one.
Yep. There's, there's two sets for that one. You gotta get to the next one, which is R 22 dash 11. Okay?
Move the ordinance be adopted.
We already have one. Uh, are there any other comments or questions? All right, anybody? Okay, Denise?
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Pow.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Pow.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance and emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a request to rezone 6.46 acres located at 8564 and 8572 East Wagon Wheel Road. The request is to rezone the property from agricultural district A1 to institutional district P1. The applicant is a church. Planning commission reviewed this request and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining there too by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to institutional district P1 and declaring an emergency.
Was this something that we discussed before that there was going to be, 612 was going to go through near this?
612 went to the, to the.
To the north.
To, you see on that drawing.
Do we have this?
No, we had another piece of property out in that area that we, uh, allowed them to put a barn on it so that they could have horses, but it's not the same piece.
Yes.
We did on that one because it had a living quarters in the barn and we gave them a sidewalk weight.
That's right.
That's what it was for. P1 is an institutional district that's allowed for churches, uh, schools, civic buildings, those kind of things.
I'll make a motion that the ordinance pass.
Second.
Motion of second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Pow. Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores. Harriman. Fugiruse.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Pow.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a request to rezone property 2.52 acres located at 3265 North Thompson. The request is to rezone it from a large product retail sales district C6 down to a thoroughfare commercial district C5. Planning commission reviewed this request, recommends approval of the, uh, rezoning, the title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining there too by rezoning certain lands from large product retail sales district C6 to thoroughfare commercial district C5 and declaring an emergency.
Patsy, question. What, what can you do in a C5 that you cannot do in a C6?
In a C6, you can only do automotive sales and automotive repair.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
And so we're taking it out where it won't be a car lot anymore and can use for anything that has open display.
Windows, etc., yeah.
That's correct.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second. Any further questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Pow.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes, ma'am.
Pow.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The last item is a waiver request for, uh, street improvements, including drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in connection with the cottages in the park. We just did the amendment to the, of the revised PUD. They are donating the right of way for the entire width of the street. Planning commission recommends that this waiver be granted. The title of the resolution reads a resolution proving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks as set forth in ordinance number 3725 to cottages in the park in connection with preliminary plat 2117, a preliminary plat.
So are they, are we waiving it inside the subdivision or just outside the subdivision?
The width of the subdivision along county line road. They would be required to do their half of the street, the full width of the property. What they have agreed to do is shift the road all onto this piece of property and donate the right of way for all that and asking for them not to be required to actually do the street improvements.
By shifting.
Going county line.
Yeah, by shifting to the, uh, to the north, the whole project will be in the Spring, in Springdale. The other side of the road is Elm Springs. And they agreed to do that. They're having, they had to adjust some lot sizes. And, uh, and, but, but they are also donating the right of way. And y'all have already approved a contract with Olson, I believe, to, uh, to do those improvements to county line and to 56th.
I move the resolution be adopted.
With option one.
Option one.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion of second. Any further questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse. Pow.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
And I, I just have one other thing. There was supposed to be a slide on here and I obviously opened the wrong file. The public meetings for the downtown master plan work session is tomorrow night at the 214 building or the old I C O and Thursday night at the Jones Center. We'd love to have you all there. Uh, there's been a, a very strong cap, our, uh, public involvement campaign that's been done through the D S A to encourage people to be there. We've had the information translated into three languages. We will have interpreters there. We really are, are strongly trying to get comments about our downtown master plan. The highlights of what we've accomplished, the fact that we did a master plan, we didn't just put it on the shelf. We've been implementing and where do we go from here? What's the next phase? So those two nights are public meetings at 6:30 to 8:30 at the 214 building tomorrow night, and it's Jones Center on Thursday night.
Is it recommended to attend both or just one necessary?
We'd love to have you at both of them, but it'll be the same presentation at each one. We're trying to just give people some options to be able to be there.
Where will it be at in the Jones Center?
I can't answer that for you right now because I don't know if the room's been, it probably hasn't. I just don't know. That's possible. There will be finger foods. There will be breakout sessions, uh, you know?
Come both nights and follow your nose.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Patsy. Uh, item 12, police and fire committee chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I'm going to read the resolution first. It's a resolution to waive competitive bidding purchase of a staff vehicle for the fire department. After the last committee meeting, uh, it was brought to our attention to the city that there was a, uh, vehicle for the fire department that was available to be purchased. And, uh, and so, uh, our chiefs looked at that and said, yes, vehicles, as we know, are very hard to, to find at this time. This, uh, our budget does allow us, uh, to, to buy a vehicle. And so the reason it's coming up now, stuff coming through committee is that it happened after our last committee meeting and this needs to be resolved.
Basically, it was a.
Is that right?
Yeah, it was a, it was a vehicle that someone else had, it was ordered for another thing and they, for whatever reasons, aren't taking it.
Yeah, the city of Johnson had ordered two vehicles. They declined one of them and so we discussed it with Superior and, uh, they said whoever can get it first can have it. So, uh, that's the reason. We apologize it wasn't on the committee meeting, but, uh, we had to get this done to waive competitive bidding, uh, in order to obtain the vehicle. So this was approved in the budget. So we're just asking for you all to waive competitive bidding tonight.
So when you say it was approved in the budget, you mean we approved the purchase of a vehicle like this at some point during the year?
Well, you, you, uh, you allocated the fund, I believe it was 120, I don't remember every line item,